Good evening, thank you for coming to tonight's school committee meeting, November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. So we will start right away with announcements. First, I have to say that this meeting is being recorded by the East Hampton Public Access Cable. And the school committee would like to thank Tim, our volunteer tonight, for taping tonight's meeting. And if you're interested, anybody's ever interested in helping tape any city meeting, then you can call Kathy at East Hampton Access Cable Station at four one three two zero three one three six zero. So Nancy, you can get started with the announcements.
Do the rest of the announcements, okay. The next school committee meetings are November twenty seventh and December eleventh. There's a half day of school on Wednesday, November twenty first, and no school on Thursday and Friday, November twenty second and twenty third due to Thanksgiving break. There is no school December twenty fourth through January first due to winter break. School will reopen on Wednesday, January second, two thousand and thirteen.
Okay. And then we have correspondence.
There is no correspondence.
Next is gifts.
So I would like to move to accept with gratitude and appreciation from the East Hampton Learning Foundation for the following ELF grant awards totaling a total of fifteen thousand dollars for two thousand and twelve. To the ELF Band at EHS in Whitebrook, two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. The Arts Festival at East Hampton High School, one thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. The Model United Nations at East Hampton High School, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. The Garden at Whitebrook, three thousand nine hundred dollars. The Food Garden at Center Peppin, two thousand five hundred dollars. Poetry in Motion at Maple, nine hundred and fifty dollars. The Leadership Club at Center Peppin, five hundred and fifty dollars. The Great Outdoors of East Hampton at Maple, one thousand eighty dollars.
Second. Motion made in second to accept these gifts. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Those. I forgot what I was supposed to say. So motion moves. Let's see. Now, actually, I wanted to say one other announcement. I wanted to thank the Committee for Stronger Schools for their support in trying to push through the override that we recently tried to pass. It was a lot of work. It's really hard to reach voters and in such a short period of time, it was even harder to do that. So, but I want to ask them to please stay involved, please don't give up the effort because hopefully that issue's not going away anytime soon. So thank you again to the Committee for Stronger Schools for their work. Next is public speak. If anybody here would like to speak about anything besides what is on the agenda, please come up to the podium at this time. Is anybody here? Okay.
I just have one thing I want to mention. I just wanted to let everyone know that we have a new brochure for our school district. And we have lots of copies of it and we're giving them to realtors' offices, Chamber of Commerce to have, and the schools themselves to give out to people who visit or new students. And so if anyone also has any thoughts of other places where it would be good to have these distributed, I don't know if local banks would put them out.
I'm gonna ask.
Great, that'd be great, yeah. If anybody has any ideas or thoughts of how other ways we might want to distribute these, let us know.
And this has been in the process for quite some time, so we're delighted to finally have it come to a culmination. And if there's anyone out there who would like to receive brochures, you certainly can email me and we'll be sure you get some. Thank you, Deb.
Okay. So next we have items of discussion. First, the subcommittee reports, by the subcommittee.
No, we have not met.
And policy subcommittee, I can say that we have not met either. And.
And I don't have anything for CES. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, but I can't make it, so I don't have an update.
And S A, oh, student activities. Thank you, Bailey.
You're welcome. The Children's Craft Fair is going to be Saturday at the high school. The Distinguished Young Women Show is Sunday at the Academy of Music in North Hampton. It starts at one.
Good luck, Bailey.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
And Student Council is just getting started discussing topics that are concerning students in the school right now, so I don't really have much else to share.
Good. All right, thank you. Next is Superintendent's report.
Yes, so we have two exciting presentations this evening. We're really delighted to call forth the Whitebrook Middle School Student Senate. They've asked if they could come and speak to the school committee, so Ms. Rebello, Principal Rebello is here with them and it's all yours.
Thank you. We're really excited to be here tonight. I'm gonna let each of them introduce themselves and they're going to share with you a little bit about the Student Senate and the information that they wanted to have. This is not our entire Student Senate who's here tonight. These are the students who were able to come tonight. We know that other students had soccer and different obligations, but this is part of our group, and so I'll let them introduce themselves.
I'm Amber in seventh grade, green team.
I'm Katie, I'm in seventh grade and I'm the purple team.
I'm Haley, I'm in fifth grade and I'm on the Dolphins team.
I'm Sophia, I'm in fifth grade, I'm on the Cougars team.
I'm Abby, I'm in fifth grade and on the Cougars team.
I'm Jackie, I'm in fifth grade and I'm on the Dolphins team.
I'm Lil, I'm in sixth grade and I'm on the Dolphins team.
I'm Casey, I'm in sixth grade and I'm on the Dolphins team.
I'm Morgan, I'm in fifth grade and I'm on the Cougars team.
Hey, hello.
Hello.
So as an active member of the Student Senate, I would like to talk about the goal and purpose of having Student Senate. It's to enhance the experience of students attending Whitebrook. We're always trying to make Whitebrook a happier learning environment, which is why we're always thinking about ways our school could become a better place. Thank you. The way that students are elected is we make a speech and design a poster, and these students elect who they think will make a better Senate.
Usually the person who gets elected first place will become the homeroom rep who will go to every meeting. The person who came in second place would become the alternate. The alternate usually goes if the homeroom rep can't go to any meeting.
Hello, the format of our Senate meetings are every other Thursday, Senate members meet to bring to Senate concerns and suggestions that some, that their homeroom have. And we write them on a big easel and the papers from that easel are hung on the wall so all students can see.
Every week, one day a week, we have an update and we tell about what we have been talking about so far in our meetings. We also have a suggestion box in each homeroom that we have for students in that homeroom. They can issue any concerns or ask any questions or tell about any comments.
So every meeting, we have an easel and we write our main concerns on it and try to figure out solutions. And lately, one of the biggest coming problems was about lunch and how people wanted to make lunch better. And so we have already invited Mr. Stratt to come to one of our December meetings, so we've already started working on some solutions for things and yeah.
Well, when we were at our Senate meeting, we were trying to discuss how we can make our school better, sort of, and we decided that we could try to come to one of the school committee meetings here. And we wanted to sort of discuss with you guys how we do things at Whitebrook and how we're making, how we're doing the Senate and everything. And one of the questions and everything was is that how the high, how there was a high school rep and not a middle school rep. And then we found out that answer because like it goes late at night and everything. Yeah. It goes late at night and it's a lot of work and like it would be a little bit too much for us, we think.
Okay, so on October thirty first, Whitebrook had a mock presidential election. We went to the library with our class and we would fill out a ballot in the voting booth. And I think everybody would agree that it was a really cool experience that was worthwhile because it gave students a chance to have a real voting experience and it gave them a voice. And then Student Senate counted the votes and determined who won the presidential election at Whitebrook.
Thank you for letting us come to the meeting. We hope that we can come back to inform you some more about what's going on in school the next time. And that's it.
All right.
So again, we want to thank you, and I don't know if you have any questions for the Student Senate members, but they wanted to have the opportunity to be able to present what was happening. And this really came from them wanting to come to a school committee meeting and being able to share, just like the high school rep has a chance to be able to share. And so we thought that this would be a good night to be able to do that. As you can tell, we have great students in our Student Senate, fifth graders all the way up to eighth graders. And most of the students who are here tonight are fifth and sixth graders, and we have a seventh grader with us, so you can tell what a great job they do with bringing their, making sure that their voices are being heard.
Excellent. Ms. Rebello, you are very lucky to have these people.
Oh, I am very lucky to have them. They do an excellent job and any information that I have for students, they do a great job of reporting back to their homerooms about how decisions are made. And they are very good with letting me know student concerns and what's happening in the building and what their fellow classmates have for concerns about Whitebrook.
I was gonna say, besides the lunch menu, what are some of the other concerns that students have?
Do some of you want to share or you want to share?
Well, sometimes we have concerns about how long the lunch line is or if the lunch monitors may have forgotten to call tables up because they may not know because so many kids might have brought home lunch. And the main concern was the lines.
Is there something besides lunch that somebody wants to share?
We were also talking about other things, like we usually have a suggestion box, because I didn't hear that come up. We have a suggestion box where students can write things in and each homeroom should have one. And students make suggestions in that. And lately, it's just pretty much been mainly about lunch stuff because there's like all this things people want to change about it. And, but some of the stuff, like bullying doesn't usually go on in our school, so that's not really a main concern or anything because it's pretty humble and everything. So that's pretty much one of the only issues that we have so far.
That's good.
A couple of the, a couple of the other things that we've talked about, we've discussed the schedule a little bit. Of course, the fifth and sixth graders would like to have recess. But it's, so it's a chance for me to also explain, you know, how much time we have in our school day and how it's not that we're opposed to having recess, but it's difficult to fit it in with math and science and social studies. There's been a couple things that have come up with the schedule in terms of this year, we went to an A B C rotation schedule, which I talked about, so that students can have both Math and Reading Academy support. So some students have said that it's been great because it's helped them in their classes with math and reading. And then some students said that they would prefer to have P E more often because it rotates with the P E. So we've sort of, in our Student Senate, we've had some discussions where people sort of like it both ways.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I'm.
Don't forget some other questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
When you introduced yourself, you introduced or said what team you were on. What's the significance of the teams?
Is there someone you want, somebody you want to talk about?
Well, when you're in fifth and sixth grade, you get separated into different, we call strands.
Right.
And there's Dolphins and Cougars. When you move up to the seventh and eighth grade, they do the same thing, but then you get colors, like purple, blue, and green.
All right. Good, good, I got it.
And you're with the same kids all day in all your classes, right?
Right.
Sometimes it changes depending on the class, but like homeroom and a few of the classes have the same kids.
All right. Do I get another?
Mm-hmm.
Girls rule, apparently.
We were noticing that. I was commenting to them earlier today when we were looking at who was able to come tonight. We do have boys that are part of our Student Senate, and unfortunately, none of them were able to attend tonight, but there is a mix of both girls and boys.
That's okay, we, we have a boy too, and he's not here tonight.
He's not here tonight.
Continue to rule. Thank you so much, and I want to, I want to compliment you, all of you, on your ability to speak in front of a group. I don't think you understand how, how good you are. So many people can't do this, are very, you know, it's very hard for them, so I definitely applaud you and hope that you will come back and talk to us some more because it's good to hear from you and it's good to hear your voices and what, what you have to say about the schools. After all, the schools are here for you. So thank you, thank you.
And we are very proud of you and proud of your engagement and your school. And I particularly like the way you're trying to problem solve. So not only do you bring the issues to your Student Senate, but you look for opportunities to problem solve those issues and bring people in to talk with you about that. In fact, I remember last year, I had the great opportunity to be able to come and talk with the Senate. I believe that was about lunch as well.
I did.
But thank you so much for coming and we're so very proud of you.
They do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just want to add that even though you don't have a representative up here at the school committee, you're welcome to come anytime, tell us what's going on in the school at any meeting. And you can speak during the public speak time at the beginning of the meeting so it's not really late in the evening. So you can have plenty of time to go back home and do whatever homework or whatever you need to do that night. So definitely welcome back at any meeting. So thank you for being here.
And we also want to let you know that you don't need to stay for the whole meeting so that you can get home and get to bed at a decent hour if that's what you want to do.
Yeah.
And are we ready for the next presentation?
I think so. So if, like Superintendent said, please feel free to leave if you need to leave now. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. We'll be talking about college and career readiness.
But you're certainly welcome.
If you want to hear that.
Yes.
It's never too early for that.
We're happy to have you, we like having someone out there.
Yes, we like having an audience, it's great. So our next presentation is on college and career readiness. We have our guidance staff from the high school and the middle school here, and they provided a nice packet for us, so we're looking forward to hearing all about the programs that are in place.
Thank you. It's gonna take a minute just to set up PowerPoint, so we'll be displaying a PowerPoint over there, but speaking from here, so.
And Chris, I'm gonna ask each of you to introduce yourselves as you get up to speak.
Yep, as soon as we're hooked up, we'll do that. There's a lot of material. Are you good? There we go. Thank you. So good evening. On behalf of Chad McGuire, who's one of the school counselors at the high school, Christina Davidson, who is the school guidance counselor at Whitebrook Middle School for grades seven and eight, and myself, I'm Chris Sabro, and I'm with Chad at the high school. We'd like to thank you all so much for having us be here and to present to you this evening. We're gonna be going over a highlight of the programs that we've had in place at the high school for the last two years and what we have in the planning phases and what's being implemented right now, which is our, our year three at the high school. So thank you very much, and we hope that you're gonna enjoy the journey that we're gonna take you on tonight. So here's our program agenda. We had originally asked for thirty minutes to present to you, and then we saw on the agenda that it was allocated for fifteen. We'll try to speed it up, but we really did put together a pretty comprehensive program, so if we go over the fifteen minutes, I hope that that's gonna be okay.
And our agenda is really quite brief tonight, so I think that should be just fine.
Okay, good, so that worked out perfectly, awesome. Thank you very much. So our journey begins with education reform and taking a look at where we've begun and where we are right now. So as we know, in nineteen ninety-three, Massachusetts enacted the Ed Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three. And then in two thousand and two, we were grace with No Child Left Behind legislation. What some of you may not be aware of is around two thousand and five, the American School Counselors Association published what was called the National Model, a Framework for School Counseling Programs. And later on that year into two thousand and six, Massachusetts, through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, also adopted this, this model. It was the hope of the American School Counselors Association that when the National Model was published and made official, that it would be implemented in all fifty of our states. And we're there now in Massachusetts, which is great, so we'll be sharing a little bit more of that with you. So going back to Ed Reform and taking a look at the pressures that Ed Reform has placed on all of us, we can kind of see since nineteen ninety-three, when the focus changed in the way that public education was offered to students in the state, this is really all of the areas that we all feel the pressures of Ed Reform, whether we're school guidance counselors, administrators, teachers, parents, students, we all feel the pressures in these areas. So it's important to kind of remember where we've come since, since those early years in the nineties. But what I'd like to specifically call attention to is that both Ed Reform and No Child Left Behind focused primarily on the teachers in terms of raising teacher quality and academic achievement. Unfortunately for the students in Massachusetts, the emotional, the physical, the social and economic barriers that can inhibit success were largely ignored. So in two thousand and six, when the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which at that time was referred to as DOE, but now we're DESI, adopted the Massachusetts Model for school, for comprehensive school counseling, it was really Massachusetts' time to get in line and say, guidance counselors are no longer ancillary support services in our school. They're integral to the success of our students. And they created for us what is a framework. And you can kind of see the framework and the design up there. But around the frame is advocacy, collaboration, systemic change, and leadership. And then in the middle of that are all the, all the specific things that guidance counselors do. So this model is truly a framework. And it's a framework whereby school counselors work with school administrators and teachers K through twelve. So it's never too early to do the work we do. So the plan is to have in place K through twelve to implement, design, and offer standards-based curriculum, which is fantastic. We love that whole idea. So the goal of comprehensive school counseling is also to vertically align curriculum. And we hear a lot of vertical alignment of curriculum when we think about our core subject areas that are offered in our schools, but not so much when we think about curriculum that guidance counselors are trained to offer. So in spring of two thousand and eleven, the Race to the Top Initiative and specifically Project Four C was, was implemented in the guidance offices at, well, it was at East Hampton High School at that time, because Christina was the transition counselor at that time for both high school and middle school. So our focus on the first year was high school. So Race to the Top came into Massachusetts, it came in nationally seventeen years after Ed Reform, eight years after No Child Left Behind, and five years after the Mass Model for comprehensive school guidance counseling. So we're seeing a progression here. So that was two thousand and eleven. And the Race to the Top Initiative gives us specific goals that our districts have to reach by the year two thousand and fourteen, or at least that's the goal. They want us to reach those. When you see up here, there's five major, what we call projects or objectives within the Race to the Top Initiative. Project Four is where the guidance counselors live. So it's Project Four, and it specifically addresses college and career readiness. But what Race to the Top also says is that in Project One, where we're looking at standards and assessments, and Project Two, where we're looking at curriculum and instruction, Project Three, school turnaround, and then data systems and infrastructure, it all leads to college and career readiness. So as, as the slide says there, it's all tied to the most critical areas in public education today. So Massachusetts was the only state in the United States to write guidance counselors into the Race to the Top application. In fact, on the first round of Race to the Top applications, Massachusetts wasn't allocated the money. We didn't receive the grant. And it wasn't until DESI came back to the drawing board, met with the Massachusetts Association of School Counseling leaders, and I was part of that leadership team, where we worked with Mitchell Chester to put together the Race to the Top application as it applied to implementing the Mass, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Model. So we were really proud of that. We met with him the day he flew to Washington to present our Race to the Top application. We know for a fact, having written guidance counselors into this, is one of the reasons why Massachusetts got the money and got the project that it did. So as we say up here, come on, Chad, go Massachusetts. Very happy about that. All right, so what does this mean for us? It means that now, you know, we're transformed school, school counselors. Anyone who has graduated from an approved program in the state of Massachusetts, like in the last ten years, has been shown the Massachusetts Model, has been shown the National Model, and we're, we're considered transformed counselors. We replaced that question of what is it that guidance counselors do with the question of how are our students different as a result of what we do? And how do we know? What is the data that backs up what it is that we do? So that's what we're asking ourselves every time we put together any type of implementation. And this is really new for, for the East Hampton Public School District. So going back now to the Race to the Top, Project Four. Project Four is broken into three different categories. Project A focuses on, on Mass Core, the completion of Mass Core. Project B is asking districts to implement a web-based college and career readiness program, which we have a web-based program in use at the high school, but we don't at the middle school level or the elementary school level. So that's one of the goals. And Project C is truly where we live. This is where the districts are asked to implement the Massachusetts Model for Comprehensive School Counseling. Priority was given, extra money was given to Level Three and Level Four schools to implement that. So we've been diligently working away at implementing the model. So when we look at college and career readiness, it is truly the umbrella under or over which the five-year graduation rate sits and Mass Core completion rate sits. So, you know, the feeling is that if we target college and career readiness in each one of those five areas mentioned earlier, five-year graduation rates will come up and Mass Core completion rate will as well. So when we look now at the specific focus on college and career readiness, and the state targets for two thousand and four, one of the targets is to increase the five-year graduation rate. The second one is to increase Mass Core completion rate, and they've given us specific targets. But we want to ask ourselves first, why did the state, or what nationally, why were targets selected around graduation rates and around college placement? And this is a slide that I think is very informational, if you can see the numbers up there. This is from the state of Massachusetts. And if the state were to collect data or did collect data on a hundred students that had applied and planned to attend our state two-year colleges and our state universities and four-year colleges, we see that out of the hundred students, say fifty-seven of them choose the two-year route and forty-three choose the three-year route. At the end, ten students will be successful and actually earn their associate degree and twenty-six students will be successful and earn their bachelor degree. And that can take students on the community college side anywhere from two years to four years to do that. And on the public four-year side, anywhere from four years to eight years to do that. So when Massachusetts and other lawmakers and educators throughout the country So, when Massachusetts and other lawmakers and educators throughout the country looked at this, they said something really needs to be done to address graduation rate and to address college readiness in terms of core programming, which led us to the MAS Core. So, very specifically, in the state of Massachusetts, through the Race to the Top application, we're being asked to increase our five-year graduation rate to 88.3% by 2014. Now, the latest data that we have on five-year graduation rate is from 2010. So, when the state provided us with this information, it told us that that cohort of students, 86.9% of them, had graduated within that five-year graduation period. So, we're, you know, we're right on target to reach that 88.3 by 2014. In terms of the MAS Core completion, now, this is a snapshot. So, they're asking us by 2014 to have 82.5% of our students taking advantage of the MAS Core. MAS Core wasn't in place before last year. We have it in place for our graduates of 2014. So, when they took a snapshot back in 2011, the state told us that only 33% of our students were reaching MAS Core, but that's no new information. We didn't have, like, foreign language requirement as part of our graduation requirement. It is now. We didn't have four years of math, specifically one year of math in the senior year. I don't know if we can still emphasize that last year of math in the senior year, because students can, you know, take high levels of math by the time they're sophomores and juniors with our schedule. But this is, these are some of the things with MAS Core. So, that is just a snapshot. It says, when you're starting here in 2011, you're at 33%. We already know by 2014, because the program of studies has changed, that's not going to be a problem reaching the 82%. It's at least my prediction. We'll see if I'm right. So, looking at why the state has targeted the five-year adjusted graduation rate, they could have chosen the four-year, they could have chosen the six-year, but they're going with the five-year. And these are some of the key points around that. First of all, it just, it makes sense. It makes sense to look at something beyond the four-year rate. So, one of the reasons for this is that the five-year adjusted looks at the importance of a high school completion, looks at the importance of a student attaining the diploma. So, if a student doesn't do that in four years, we don't want to forget about them. They're still important. The high school diploma is what opens up their future, whether it's college acceptance or careers. They need the diploma. It's a starting point. So, if we have to work with them for one more year, we'll work with them for one more year, and we think that that's awesome. Second, it emphasizes the overall importance of earning a high school diploma rather than just earning it in the four years, which is what I just mentioned. The five-year graduation rate also asks schools to increase innovative support and program opportunities for student success throughout the high school period. And then last but not least, the five-year graduation rate, it's particularly critical for students for whom we know are going to struggle reaching the four-year graduation rate. That would be our English language learners. It would be our students who are identified in elementary school and middle school of being at risk for one reason or another. Just because they enter high school doesn't mean that those at-risk factors go away. We still, we own them. We need to program different activities to help them achieve success. And then our recovered dropouts. So, students that might drop out, when we do bring them back in or they decide to come in, we can recover them within that five-year period of time, and it can have a positive effect on our five-year graduation rate and our AYP. So, those are some of the reasons why the state chose this graduation rate. MAS Core, we know that MAS Core is a measure of the value of a rigorous high school course study, and that's what we're going to be doing, is gathering data around how many of our students are taking advantage of MAS Core? How many of our students value this? And that'll tell us some things. And the second part of MAS Core is that we know it's going to reduce the percentage of students who are required to take those remedial classes that at the college level that they don't earn college credit for, they can't use financial aid for, and it slows them down. It turns those two-year associate degree programs into four years, and it turns those four-year bachelor degree programs into six and eight. We don't want that for our students. We don't want that for our students across the state of Massachusetts. So, at the last school committee meeting, there were questions about where does this information come from? How do we compare East Hampton District to other schools? Just very quickly, we're going to show you two websites that you can go to to get this information. The first one is our state website. Dun, 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 and there it is. So, Chad is going to click on graduation rates, which is in your pull-down menu to the left. Dun, dun, there we go. And you can see for the year 2011, the state is providing us with what our four-year graduation rate is. And then if you go down further, there's the five-year graduation rate based on our graduates in 2010. This is the most recent data that DUCI has made available to us. Another question came, how do we compare East Hampton to other schools? On this public website, you would click on this DART analysis right here. It takes a while. There we go. So, you would be able to pull up any district that you thought was comparable to East Hampton. You might pull up a district like Drury High School, which is up in the Berkshires, or, you know, some of the other towns that in terms of socioeconomic status pretty much match ours, and you would be able to do a comparison. So, that's the state website. And this, you have data that goes back to, I think, 2006 on this website, so it's pretty amazing. The other website that I want to show you is everything you could hope to know, research, read, and educate yourself about these cohorts, these four-year cohorts, five-year graduation cohorts, how it's calculated. And this is done at the national level. And so, I think Chad, if you can just flick, pull down to maybe page 11 or so, but you get a sense of, I think it's a 74-page report. But somewhere around page 11, it explains what the four-year cohort is, and then the next page will show you actually how it's calculated. So, this is done for four-year, five-year, adjusted, and six-year. And it was the state of Massachusetts, the Department of Education, working alongside of our governor, who chose the five-year adjusted rate for us to be setting our Race to the Top data against. All right. Thank you. And I'll be putting this up on our website, so for anyone that wants to download it later, you'll be able to do that. All right. So, in the summer of 2010, we were hired, the three Cs, as we like to call ourselves. And in that summer, we really took a look at what had been done in the East Hampton Public Schools in terms of guidance, and where did we want to go with it? So, when we looked at 2010 and prior, we saw that traditional practices were put in place, which meant the focus was on individual planning, and it was met on, it was focused on meeting individually with students and discuss choices such as course selection and transition plans. And essentially, 80% of counselors' time were being spent with about 20% of the population. So, that has changed with the transformed school counselor. We do everything that we like to call intentional school counseling. There is nothing random about what we do. And our focus is on reaching all students. Every single student that's in our building, we reach throughout the year, and that is truly our goal. So, those are the big changes there. And what's important in the transformed school counselor model as well is to really recognize that college and career readiness truly involves more than just choosing an occupation or college major in the junior or senior year. It truly does begin in the elementary school levels and comes up through the middle school. So, the beauty of that comprehensive school counseling model is so important. So, in the summer of 2011, Race to the Top required us to do a gap analysis of our programs and also to write a mission statement. So, we met along with Gail Cannon and George Sampson over the summer. Gail's our career counselor, and George is the school adjustment counselor at the high school, and wrote a mission statement, which was then presented to our ad team in July and then put into our program of studies. So, the mission of the East Hampton School Counseling Program is to advocate for the provision of planned, data-driven, academic career, and personal and social experiences for all students grades K through 12. As a result of school counseling programs and services, all East Hampton youth will be challenged and supported in their development as they become prepared, informed, responsible participants in an ever-changing world. So, this is our mission statement. This is what we wake up every morning and come to work excited about. So, one of the definitions that's really important is to know what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, how it defines college and career readiness, and this is how they do it. So, they're telling us that college and career ready means that an individual has the academic and technological, the personal and social, and the workplace knowledge and skills necessary for success in post-secondary education and economically viable career pathways in a 21st century economy. One does not come before the other. The expectation is that when our students walk across the stage, receive their diploma, they're ready for both, and that's what we're really being asked to do. So, when DUCI identifies the project areas for us to work with, remember that one diagram that was Ed Reform. This is the diagram now that goes around college and career ready. And what they're saying to us is by 2014 to reach that target, these are all the things that our district needs to be looking at, should be looking at, and is looking at. So, these things include, like, implementing the MAS Core, looking at high school turnaround, looking at high school graduation rates, making sure that there's funding for interventions and that sort of thing. And this is what it looks like when we go back to that earlier diagram. Everything that our schools do for college and career ready affects everything that Ed Reform asked us to do back in 1993, because none of that's really changed either. It's all equally important. And some of the Ed Reform projects and the No Child Left Behind projects still have an implementation deadline date of 2017, so we have, we still have many years ahead of us in all of these areas here. So, what does transformed guidance initiatives at Whitebrook Middle School and East Hampton High School look like? First, everything that we do, we start with a step-by-step process using data to drive school counselor goal development. Then, we take a look at maximizing our time and our resources. So, we continue to work with students one-on-one, but we're also in the classrooms, providing large classroom presentations, small group presentations, parent programs in the evening. You name it, we're doing it. We link goals and our interventions to the school improvement plan. So, that's something, our goals are directly tied to that. We work to eliminate those random initiatives. Everything that we do, we're always asking, how are our students different as a result of what we're about to do, what we just did, and we evaluate that. And then, everything is measured in terms of student outcomes. So, that's been our journey. So, now, we want to share with you some very specific things in terms of what's happening at Whitebrook and what's happening at East Hampton High School. So, I'm now going to turn it over to Christina Davidson.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Christina Davidson, and I'm the school counselor for students in grades 7 and 8 at Whitebrook. So, I want to talk with you a little bit about our Race to the Top initiatives at Whitebrook, and I'm going to start with what we chose as our goal last year for the 2011-2012 school year. And this was in order to impact those on-time graduation rates and MAS Core completion in the future. We chose a goal of achieving 100% on-time promotion of our 8th grade students to the 9th grade by the end of the 2011-2012 school year. So, looking at who were our students last year? Enrolled in 8th grade, we had 123 students. And we really decided we wanted to focus an intervention around our most academically at-risk students. Who were the students who were at risk for retention last year? And there, we identified 10 students, which was 8% of our 8th grade class last year. So, looking at an intervention and thinking about what we could do to help these students out, we identified these students by looking at report card data from the previous year, MCAS data, discipline data, and attendance data, data that we know are tied directly to dropout rates. And so, what we did was we ran a weekly group for these students that we'll call an academic success group, or in our school, it's called SHAPE Group, that students, that these identified students were required to attend one time a week. And what we did is we looked at progress every week, grades, individually went over missing assignments, incomplete work, and developed action plans. So, students came every week, they got to see their progress in grades based on what teachers had entered into the computer, and had a chance to write a goal. And each week, we checked back on their goal. So, every week when they came and met with me, students wrote a goal, and the following week when they came back, we checked to see if they were successful in meeting that goal. And through this, we were able to help students get different services and supports that they needed. So, in working this closely with that group of students, if they needed support from area mental health services or other agencies, we were able to work with the families to get them those supports that they needed, or getting them into after-school programs that we run through the Collaborative for Educational Services here in East Hampton. I worked with families. They knew that their kids were coming every week and meeting with me and having this support in place, and also had a chance to work with the high school counselors. When those students were ready to transition, we worked together really closely so that they could, that the high school teachers and counselors knew who was coming up, what their skills were, and what needed to be in place in order to continue to support them at the high school level. So, in looking at our results, we did achieve 100% of 8th graders promoting to the high school at the end of the 2011-12 school year. And also, this I find to be really important, 100% of the participants in this group reported that it was helpful. And that's really important to me, because I don't want to spend time working with kids if they're not getting help out of it. Okay? So, the important thing to remember, though, is that because students promoted doesn't mean that all those risk factors have gone away. So, some of those students were required to, or strongly encouraged to, attend the summer program that was run this year through East Hampton, and some of them did. And then, coming up into the high school level, the counselors and teachers are looking at data. Students are continuing with SHAPE Group. I'm happy to say that that is continued in the 9th grade at the high school. George Sampson, the adjustment counselor is running those groups with our kids, and anyone else, and looking at first-quarter progress reports or first-quarter final grades. Are there other students who now, maybe we didn't identify at the middle school level, but now through that big transition, they need some extra support? So, we're identifying them and hopefully, you know, getting them the support that they So, jumping to this year, just to let you know a little bit about what we're going to be working on this year in our Race to the Top goal, is we are looking to decrease by 16% the number of failing grades per quarter for identified at-risk 7th and 8th grade students by the end of the 2012-2013 school year. So, we shifted a little bit in what we were looking at, from looking at just promotion and retention rates to really looking at who are these students? What are the skills that they're bringing to the table? We really feel like this is going to give us a better idea of who they are. So, that's what our focus is going to be this year at Whitebrook. And at this point, I think I want to turn it over to Chad McGuire, who's going to talk to you about the Race to the Top initiatives at East Hampton High. Thanks.
Thanks, Christina. So, Chad McGuire, guidance counselor at the high school, grades 9 through 12, last name's A through K. I'm also the student council advisor, so Bailey, if this is what the Senate's doing at the middle school, we've got to work cut out for us. So, you know, looking at the Race to the Top initiatives at the high school, in 2011, 2012, we developed a goal to look at the numbers from the graduating class of 2011, and we wanted to decrease the percent by 5% the number of students who were placing into a developmental class at the college level. So, that would specifically be in the math that we were looking at. So, our baseline data for that class, the graduating class of 2011, was that 45% of those seniors that graduated applied to Holyoke Community College. And of those students that attended Holyoke Community College, 76% of them placed into at least one developmental course, meaning that they were, again, not necessarily testing at college-ready, so they were having to take a developmental class. So, that was our baseline data going into our program. The first thing we did was we wanted, you know, we recognized the need, we knew the data going into it, and we wanted to provide a support that would help our graduating class of 2012. So, we developed the following goal of first administering the A-plus advanced diagnostic. We did that to all 12th grade students. What this did was allow us to know which students would be deemed at-risk for having to take a developmental course at the college level. So, how we knew that was based upon their score through the A-plus advanced. If they scored between a 0% to a 60%, they would be at that at-risk area. So, then, once we had our targeted audience, we were able to provide one-on-one counseling with those individuals to, you know, explain to them what their score meant and what the implications would be for them at the college level. We invited them to participate in the A-plus advanced program, which was a course that we were able to offer through the 21st century jump program. we were able to offer through the 21st Century Jump Program. This had coaching support, so it was an online program that they could do to kind of better the skills in the areas. It focused on their strengths, but also their weaknesses to try to prepare them better for when they went on to the community college or the four-year public school, to better their chances at placing into a college-level class. To help also kind of drum up additional support for that, we were able to place an ad in the local paper in the summit, as well as we also posted the information of the class to the school website. And then lastly, we made phone calls to all the parents of the individuals who were, you know, deemed to be at-risk. So, in looking at our numbers, so we had 104 students in the senior class. We're proud to say that all 104 students participated in the initial diagnostic. So all 104 took the, took the online diagnostic. Of those, 62% were deemed to be at-risk, meaning that they scored between that 0 and 60%. And of those 62, 15 of them enrolled into the A-plus diagnostic class with the, with the coach. So at this time, in December, DESI will make available the information that says your graduates went to these institutions, and here are the classes that they placed into. So at that time in December, we'll be able to kind of look back at last year's graduating class and say, you know, did this intervention have a positive support? Did the efforts yield positive gains for that graduating class? And then, of course, in looking at this year in 2012, 2013, and you know, this was as a result of a meeting that we had at the end of, or the beginning of July, myself, Christine Savaro, and then Superintendent Follinsby. We had a great meeting, and in it we discussed, you know, increasing the college-going rates. So our goal for this year was to increase by 3% the number of students continuing on to a post-secondary education or career training by June of 2013. This was in comparison to last year's graduating class of 2012, which was at 85%. So at this point in the program, we've certainly provided a great deal of information. It's a lot to take in, a lot to kind of go over. But what we were hoping to do here is, you know, we recognize, you know, that there has been a wealth of information. We know that we've got interventions in place. We know that we are trying to work creatively to deliver those interventions. One thing I think we would like to do moving forward in the future, you know, and this is working collaboratively with you, is to find other means within the school schedule to, you know, to develop or to implement the curriculum that we've been bringing forward. You know, when you look at the Whitebrook and the, and the high school schedule, you know, it's focusing a lot, obviously, on the academics, the courses that need to be offered. But what we feel we can bring to the table with that designed curriculum, again, not the random acts of guidance, but the, you know, the data-driven acts of guidance that with the curriculum we can bring in. Just really quickly, if we wanted to look at a student's schedule, you know, a ninth grade student's schedule, you know, you can see with the four-by-four schedule that it's, it's pretty restrictive. There's not a lot of initial flexibility to go into the classroom and do these activities. Certainly, we have some great teachers who are willing to let us come in, but we understand that the pressures of their classroom as well, so we can't keep going to the same teachers all the time. So we hope to work creatively, you know, with the administration, with the, with the school committee, to find opportunities to try to, to work with that schedule, to work creatively and get in there to more of a, a more consistent time to do that. Going a little one step further, just looking at the CTEC student's schedule, just another example of how much more restrictive it is. Certainly, as you know, with CTEC, they're out of the building for two periods a day. So when they're coming back to the building, they're, they're simply able to just take their four core classes. And that's going to be pretty much the case all throughout, so it's really hard for them to have an opportunity in the school day to access the work we're doing. So that kind of brings us to some questions of relating to equity and access. You know, from an equity standpoint, will the targeted interventions be available to all the students? You know, as I mentioned, just the CTEC students. Are they able to access all the targeted interventions? How is the comprehensive school counseling program supported in the master schedule? Something else we just spoke to. From an access standpoint, will MasCor classes be available to all students? And will the efforts continue to be sustained over time? From an achievement standpoint, what is the quality of the student work in the MasCor classes overall? And how do our at-risk, at-risk students compare to that? And then lastly, with attainment, which students complete MasCor classes and which students do not? And while we certainly have the overarching goal that we're working on towards MasCor, it's important to note that with the CTEC schedule or in certain special education cohorts, they will not reach MasCor simply because of their graduation requirements and what they're able to do within the student's schedule. So there could, you know, this hopefully will bring us to some systemic change. You know, as school counselor, we're delivering effective targeting programs. We're delivering these programs to meet the students' needs. That could be through a one-on-one setting, through a small group or a large group setting. School counselors are collaborating with administrators. We're collaborating with the teachers, students, parents, and staff in the community to, to deliver these programs. I know in the, in the packets that we provide you, there was a lot of information that we've covered today about Race to the Top, but in there, there's, there's a lot of other information, including our school, our comprehensive school calendars. So we invite you, if you, if you have the opportunity, to stop out to any of the events within the calendar and just see some of the activities and programs we're delivering. I think on a last note, we're, you know, this is what we do. We're, we're passionate about it. We recognize that we're not ancillary support services. We feel like we're good at it. And, you know, we look forward, moving forward, to, to be working with the students of East Hampton, with the school committee, with the, with the teachers and the staff, administration as well, for many years to come. So thank you very much for your time. If you have any comments or feedback or questions, if there's time allowed, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Sure. Questions? Thank you. A lot to take in.
Have we overwhelmed you?
A little.
I do feel overwhelmed, but I have one question for you. It's a tremendous amount that you presented to us, and it's all so very impressive. And I think we're very, very fortunate to have the three of you as part of East Hampton Public Schools. I feel like we're very blessed. One question that I have is, I'd like to hear about what you do when it comes to coaching, leading, guiding students for the college track and choosing colleges and applying to colleges, and, and how that whole process and effort goes, if that's something that can be condensed into something brief. But anyway, I'm interested in that piece of it. Like, what happens to help kids along with that college process? And one of the things I, I wanted to just comment on is I know, I think many of us have noticed over the years, you know, oftentimes the Gazette publishes where students go to schools from various high schools. And at times it has seemed as though East Hampton's list of colleges that students have attended over the years hasn't been quite as impressive as some of the other districts. And so that's something I think that we've discussed that's crossed our minds, that we'd like to learn more about.
Right.
Like, why, why would that be? And how, how could we change that? Or why is that the case? What could be done to improve that situation?
And if I can, the, the difference between where kids are accepted versus where they actually go.
Where they go.
Because there's...
In your handout, we provided you with the three-year placement information in terms of the colleges that students have been accepted to over the course of three years. And there's an asterisk next to each college of where our students have gone to. We don't have the capability right now of cross-tabulating, so we can't say to you, all the students that applied to this college ended up attending this. Our program isn't set up in that way. I think it's outside of the folder. So were you given something that was put together? It's in there. Yep, it's in there somewhere. So we do have that information for you, so that you can definitely take a look at that. I think the answer to the second question probably couldn't be answered in a simple manner. The first question, you think we could do a pretty good job of pretty quickly? So college and career readiness right now, in terms of focused types of things, begins in the seventh grade and specifically in the eighth grade. So Christina has Career Day with the seventh graders. It starts there. When we start to do our transition activities with the eighth graders, we are going down and talking to them at that point about college placement, college readiness. We're also telling students in this district that they will graduate from high school, because we do have a good percentage of students who are first generation, whose parents have never graduated from high school. And to be honest with you, a good number of parents who don't feel that high school graduation is the most important thing. So we're combating that as early as we possibly can. The conversation happens in seventh grade, it continues right on through. Our transition activities are specifically geared at preparing these eighth graders to come to the high school and take rigorous courses and understand the value of a high school degree, opening the door for the future. So you'll see on the calendars that we provided you with the ninth graders, we provide that, that web-based career planning program to every single one of our ninth graders. So our four-year plan starts there. The state would like us doing six-year plans, and that'll come eventually, but right now we do the four-year plan. So part of what they do is they write their goal, and each year we check in, are you reaching your goal? You said you wanted to go to a four-year school. Here's what your grades are. So that's the individual type of counseling that we do.
Yeah, and, you know, I, for the sake, I mean, certainly the information's in the packet, but, you know, and you can see through the calendar how extensive the programming really is, starting at the ninth grade level and feeding up through the senior year, but, I mean, there's any number of programs that are done and, and activities that are done focused on that career and college readiness. So...
And, you know, just to touch base with, you know, who is it that we're compared to? I think to compare us to an Amherst and to a Northampton, does our students really know good in some ways? Because we have area towns where the configuration, the socioeconomic configuration is so incredibly different than East Hampton's. And we have to recognize where East Hampton's roots are and what's of value to the folks here. So for some people, being accepted to Holyoke Community College is like, oh my gosh, we never thought we'd see a student graduate from high school, never mind attend a two-year school. So we celebrate those students. We celebrate the students that, that graduate. And certainly for our students that are also in families where it's not first-generation college-going students, and we work with them, you know? But the parent really, the parents in this community start, you know, setting the foundation from that, and we take them and we continue working. So, you know, it's kind of like, we've got these three different groups of students, and, and we just have to meet all of their needs and respect them and respect their families and, and do the best that we can while encouraging them to reach the points that, that we know that they can reach.
There's also a great calendar, you have a great calendar on your council website
Yep.
That you kind of follow. It's kind of in here, too, but, you know, okay, so it'll tell you in September, here's what you do, and in October, here's what you do. And some of the parent nights that they have, you actually get a physical calendar, September, October, and it'll give you hints what to do.
And I was going to say, just from past, from experience of last year,
Mm-hmm.
I worked with Mr. McGuire, and meeting with me as a parent, I mean, he, when he says they meet with all parents, they meet with all parents. I mean, I'm just amazed at like what the two of you do at the high school, just the two of you.
Right.
But, I mean, I sent him emails with my silly questions, not knowing what I was supposed to do, and he was so helpful.
I second that.
So, yeah, yeah.
A through K.
Yes.
L through Z is not too bad.
Hoffo is running around the wall with Savaro.
But with their, the sessions that they have, too, I mean, they're so informative. They bring in people from other schools to explain about the financial issues with colleges, and they are so incredibly helpful with the two of them. It's, so utilize them. That's all I would say, is utilize them.
Do you...
Can I just ask a quick question? I thought was interesting. So are, so you're following, like, for this year, will you, like, so my son's started college. So will you be, you're going to be able to see the courses he took, so you know?
Not specific to him. We'll receive data back on, here were your college-going rates, you know, two- and four-year, public, private, and then of those students who placed into college-level classes. So I think, you know, I don't want to speak out of place, but I think due to FERPA, we would not be able to actually see what he himself is doing, but, or any other student percent, but...
So numbers.
Yes, exactly, numbers, not, not names.
Yep.
So do you have, this seems like a kind of crazy question, given all the time, the limited time you have in life and all this that you do. But do you, are you able to devote time to, like, coaching kids, advising them on what schools they should apply to?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, our formal part of that program begins in, oh, Bailey, help me with this. We started working probably together in January of your junior year.
Yeah.
So Mr. McGuire and I have, it's called the pink form, and we have all of our juniors fill that pink form out. And it indicates to us at that time what a student might be thinking of. It requires them to go out and ask their teachers to describe them, all kinds of things. That's our first planning meeting is with the student, and we invite every single parent to come into our offices and meet with us from January until June of the junior year, right through there. We have some really awesome sophomores right now that are having those meetings with us, which is pretty incredible. But for us, it's that junior year. We take them on a field trip to the National College Fair in West Springfield, and we just roll with them. So we are very focused on them from that time, from that January after. And then prior to that also, in their sophomore year and their junior year, they received workshops on us, from us, on how to prepare for the PSAT, how to interpret your PSAT scores, how to study for your SAT. We give a presentation to parents at the spring open house on that. So lots of focus on our students and just understanding what's out there for them and where to find scholarships and how to get financial aid and all of that.
And college visits, what to look for.
Yes.
What kind of questions to ask, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and what to do when your student, you just feel like your student's not doing anything. Light that fire under their butt.
Trust me, he'll stop them in the hallway. Not let him by until he hears something.
Only wants to know.
Yeah.
Yes?
We've just heard from an amazing group of Whitebrook students tonight. And I know you, you talked extensively about your goals with the, the seventh, eighth grade, and I wonder if you could share, they seem like they're practically ready to apply for college, you know, in some of their skills. What are some of the issues that, that you face with your students at the, at Whitebrook? I don't mean specific students, but I mean generally speaking, they're not talking to you about going to college yet, I take it. Apply. They don't get the pink form yet.
They don't get the pink form. No. But it's important that we do start having conversations like that in seventh and eighth grade, because we're trying to set the stage for the high school and the importance of getting to know yourself as a learner, what your interests are, what your skills are, looking ahead at the important decisions that are going to be made, especially in that eighth grade year. We work a lot, you know, in the seventh grade, too, as to like, what are the issues that come up in seventh grade? That's a big transition year.
Right.
Mr. Bello, as you know. And as you, as any seventh graders in here, Katie, I know, it's a big transition year. So trying to work with students at the seventh grade level to figure out, do I have the skills to be a successful student? What are the skills of a successful student? Looking ahead, I'm going to be going to high school in a couple of years. What do I need to be thinking about right now? And then we really jump off in the eighth grade in talking about what the choices are at the high school and what they need to be thinking about now in order to make the right decisions. So when I ask my eighth grade class, how many of you are thinking about college? And nine out of 10, nine out of 10 of them raised their hand. And I then say, well, we're going to start talking about your transition into high school. And it's really important to know that right now. If you're thinking about a college four years down the road, the decisions and your courses that you're going to choose in ninth grade is all part of that. So that when it comes time to fill out the pink form, that's not the first time they're thinking about what they're going to do for college, because at that point, it might be too late to apply to that school that they want to go to. So we want them thinking in seventh grade, in sixth grade, if younger if we can, about the choices that they're going to have to make as they get older. And it's really about getting to know themselves, who they are, who they are as a student and as a learner, and what they want, what they're good at. So we're having a lot of those conversations in seventh and eighth grade on an individual level and on a whole group level or small group level.
And if the career and college readiness initiatives are taken up in any district through Race of Top, K through 12, imagine these conversations in Kindergarten in first grade. I mean, our district would just be awesome. So you can't, you know, even starting in seventh grade is, is too late for these conversations, especially if some of our students are coming from families where these conversations aren't being had. They need to be had in the classrooms, delivering content around this, very specific around this. So we're excited.
Well, your mission statement is unbelievable. I'm thinking Congress should possibly adopt. Economically viable. Each student is going to be economically viable. That's, that's pretty amazing.
Yep.
I mean, that's a, that's a goal, a mission that is
Yeah, yeah.
A huge challenge. So I applaud you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The three Cs.
The three Cs.
Three Qs. Three Qs. Thank you.
I have about a hundred questions, but maybe someday I'll come and make an appointment.
Anytime. And please visit us, come to our programs.
Make your list and send emails.
We'd love to see you, we'd love to see you at our programs.
I don't know when you would fit me in, but...
Thank you all so much. Very informative, we greatly appreciate it.
Okay, I guess I'll just move on to Matters for Action. First up is the minutes of the October twenty-third.
So I move to approve the minutes of the October twenty-third school committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the October twenty-third, 2012 meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, warrants and hair.
I move to approve the school payroll dated November first, 2012 in the amount of four hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred and four dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the school payroll dated November first, 2012 in the amount of four hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred and four dollars, sixty-one cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November first, 2012 in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November first, 2012 in the amount of two hundred forty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-eight cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the school payroll dated November fifteenth, 2012 in the amount of four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, excuse me, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the school payroll dated November fifteenth, 2012 in the amount of four hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars, eleven cents. All those in favor?
Aye. And I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November fifteenth, 2012 in the amount of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November fifteenth, 2012 in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars, ninety-six cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have one school choice opening request?
I move to accept the opening at Center or Pepin? Which school is it? From Rob Orlando, for a grade-one student who is moving out of the city and would like to stay in our school. Is that for Center or Pepin?
Doesn't say.
I'm not sure.
Do we need to know? Okay. Center or Pepin?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to request school choice of slot be open for 2012-2013 school year in grade one of Center-Pepin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions, opposition? Okay, and next we have out-of-state field trip request.
I move to accept the trip to Italy and Croatia. The teacher is Mary Ann Bat and...
Bosch.
Bosch, sorry. They'll be going during the April break, April eleventh through twentieth. There you go.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the high school field trip to Italy-Croatia during April-Spring break. All those in favor?
Aye.
What group is going? Foreign language? Oh, they do it every year. Oh.
Do we have all in favor on that one?
Yes, we do. Yes. I was just trying to figure out how I could get to go.
So, I believe that's it.
It's a little slow.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, again.
Thank you everyone.